Here tonight, is anybody here okay plus okay Charlie's at Zoom they have five members. Uh for a variance or an appeal, our first hearing was an appeal, the second is a variance application. Uh to do an appeal and be successful, you have to have four of the five members in favor of your appeal. If you won three to two, you'd lose uh because you need for it's for to win. So that'll be in both cases uh for anybody to address will in all the hearings that I will hear from the proponents first. Just state your name and address for the record when you speak, uh we'll hear from the opponents. People who are proposing whatever they're proposing first, and then we will open it up for any people in support of the proponents. And then we'll open it up for anybody in opposition to what the opponents proponents are proposing. And if any new material comes up, we'll give the opponents an opportunity to address any new items that were not addressed in their presentation. So uh what I'd like to do is start the first hearing with someone reading the notice and confirm with the. Or uh were the postings uh put in the paper also the publication?
Yes.
Just for the record.
Uh the notices were published on um. Uh June twenty second and June twenty ninth for this.
And the certified mails were sent out to the butters with it three hundred feet?
Yes.
Okay, and um and was the open meeting that was posted, the meeting was posted?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so um I'm gonna have uh the clerk be the somebody at least read the uh the the. Public hearing notice and we'll we'll get to our minutes at the end of the meeting, we get time to do that, but I wanna get the public. Get someone, does somebody have the notice for the public meeting?
I do.
We can read that into the record please.
Yeah, the East Long Meadow Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on July tenth twenty twenty three at six thirty P M. In the library conference room at the East Long Meadow Public Library sixty sixty Center Square, East Long Meadow, M A zero one zero two eight. Case uh. Case Z A A twenty twenty three dash oh one, a petition for administrative appeal of notice of zoning violation slash order of cease and desist issued to forty one rural lane. Assessors parcel I D sixty dash seven dash forty four. Uh for violation of East Meadow zoning by law, chapter four fifty point three dash three. Three applicant Timothy uh.
Jagar.
Jagar forty one rural lane rural lane. East Long Meadow, M A zero one zero two eight. Information relating to applications filed with the Department of Planning and Community Development is available for public inspection at the town hall sixty center square. To view an electronic electronic version of the case files, please visit songmadowma.gov slash uh active case files. For the board, Brian Hill clerk, that's not accurate anymore, but uh Brian Hill is no longer clerk.
Okay, so we're gonna open up the hearing, uh the proponents, uh Mr. Jagar, I believe was the.
That's me.
Yeah. Make a presentation, just give your name and address.
My name is Tim Jagar, I live at forty one rural lane, I've been living there since December of two thousand and twenty. Uh prior to my living there, my parents lived there from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty. Um so we received a notice of cease and desist order from the town to um stop all illumination devices on our property. Um because it was brought to our attention that someone found these lights to be what they describe as objectionable. Uh the statute in our East Long Meadow bylaws states that any resident may find a piece of lighting objectionable and ask for it to be removed. That is all the statute states, it doesn't give a definition of what that might mean. It doesn't give a reason as to why it's objectionable, it just says if I find this objectionable and ask the town for you to remove it. Get a cease and desist order, it is now my responsibility to the town to remove it from my property. So the lights that are in question, I believe, are the up lightings that I have on six or seven trees in my backyard. They are only on my property, they are um spotlights that rise up on three maple trees and three pine trees. We have them for a number of different reasons, uh we have found that it helps to keep the animals away. We have a garden, we like to let our dog out at night and like to see what's in the backyard for any uh reason for there's any other animals. And uh quite honestly, we like the way that it looks, um we have not had any problem with these lights up until recently. So I'm having a problem trying to figure out what happened in the time period before to the time period of now.
How long have these lights been there?
Uh I would say my parents put them up at least seven years ago.
And have used them consistently?
Consistently in that timeframe.
And they haven't changed during that?
They have not changed, um recently, we have done some property developments on our plot of land. Um I believe that this is where uh all of the problems have arisen. However, I cannot prove that, and the only thing that I know is that we have changed nothing in our time as owners of the property and have such now received a cease and desist order for something that has been available and used for the last seven years. Anything else?
Uh also, the building inspector never came to our property to look at them.
Yeah, I went by the day, but I could see, but I I couldn't tell you what it lit up. My my only problem would be is if it was like illuminating somebody's backyard, which it didn't appear. I mean, by looking at the lights, I didn't think that would be the case, but.
Our direct.
Not being there in the middle of the night, I couldn't tell.
I would invite any member of this, anyone who's here today, if you would like to come at any point during the night, I will make myself available. Turn those lights on for your view. No, I understand.
Keep the animals on.
You've got, how many of these lights?
There are six canister lights.
Six lights, so they.
And we actually have a photo of it, if you.
Just describe for me the 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 what they are, the canister lights, these are, these are the kind of.
Correct, and you stay and then.
And what and what kind of a bulb is in there, is it an L E D? It's an L E D.
He can speak to it more.
Let's see, little incandescent wattage, because I know you don't measure L E D and watts, but do you know what these things, they, do you know how many lumens?
My name's Paul Jagar, live in Enfield, Connecticut now, previous owner of this facility of this home.
Yeah.
I'm the one that installed them.
Yeah.
And I believe it was twenty seventeen, and to be honest, I don't recall the uh wattage of them. Um I would refer to them as landscape lighting, uh I think everybody has seen it around.
Buy it at Home Depot.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Did you do any tree cutting or anything, Tim, in the past?
No.
So you said you did some changing.
Well, we've recently uh put on a new patio, put on a greenhouse, done things of that nature.
But nothing that should have changed the illumination?
That is correct.
Um and we also have a.
We have a picture of it, and I also have a two direct neighbors, one of them is here, one of them is not. And the one who is not here um has written us a letter saying that not only does she not find the lights objectionable, but she actually enjoys them.
This is your butter on one side?
Yes, so she said.
Yeah, this side is also here tonight, yeah, in favor presumably.
Correct.
Um so she said, I live at thirty five rural lane next door to forty one, the lights are located in the backyard and behind their shed on the thirty five rural side. They do not shine on our property in any way, the lights are actually pretty as an old neighbor on rural, I'm hoping for a compromise to be worked out.
Lived behind, I I was by there today too, but it couldn't make any sense of the rear.
So behind there is actually a new community garden that they do a crop share and it's a. Crow River Farm, it is a farm there that they have begun to.
Living back there.
There is houses in the back there, but no, I don't believe there's any residential within.
Not behind us, yeah.
There's no way. They wouldn't even say up lighting on trees. Is that letter submitted to the board or is it here, is it just online?
No, she texted me, I asked her.
To be able to introduce that.
Sure, if you could email me that, anything you share tonight.
Yeah, just would email the board so we can have an official record. Who is the name of the person who?
Peg Grimaldi.
Peg Grimaldi, okay. This is the person, the the other butter. What's your address?
Thirty five.
Thirty five rural, okay. Your butt's on your right left?
On my left, if you're facing the road.
Okay. That's what it looks like back there. That's what it looks like at night, I couldn't see, you know, the the daylight in Ohio would be.
Yeah, and in the summertime, it doesn't, you can't really get dark back there until eight thirty nine o'clock.
Are they on timers?
Yeah, we have them on timer.
They run for about four hours.
They're off by noon or midnight.
Just a full.
Four minute, yeah.
Timer, just a full of software.
We actually had new electrical run out there, and so it is plugged in with a.
It's plugged into a timer.
Plug?
No, it's not a smart plug, it's a manual push the button and it runs.
It's one of the like a Christmas lights, something like that.
That's what it looks like at night, yeah, I mean it's bright, but it, I mean, it's looks like it's mostly their yard, I don't see. This is all seed of trees that's budding the C S A.
Correct.
These things are aimed up.
Straight up.
Thank you.
Just like you would email that to them, so we can have that as official record, and that would be exhibit two with the letter. Miss Grimaldi.
But many people in this meeting have seen them and can tell you that they are not very bright.
I understand. Um so you do you have any other?
My main concern here is the vagueness of this law.
Yeah, there may be some issues with the vagueness of this law, in my opinion, as. Deal with that, I think what we gotta do is hear all, we wanna know. Then we wanna hear from the people who who believe that this uh that one of that are in support of with the building inspector rule. And I'm sure we'll come up with something then. So I'd like to have anybody who want.
Two, I'm sorry, you said to call it exhibit two?
Exhibit two will be the letter, your picture will be exhibit one, um and then we'll take the test. From people tonight, unless there's other letters, has any letter been received at all?
Nope.
Or against, no, okay, so um but I'd like to hear from, is any other people who wanna speak in favor of overturning the building inspector and what their opinions on the lighting is, yes?
Uh my name is Lucy Jagar, I live at forty nine Summers Road, Tim is my nephew, so I've been to this home many times, I actually sold. I sold the house to Paul Leon, um I just wanna point out that this is not a tiny backyard.
No, no, I know.
This is not anywhere near anyone else's home.
We, I saw.
It is way in the back, it doesn't shine on anybody's property, so.
Yeah, and I get, I didn't see how it could possibly affect the road or traffic. What I can see from the distance, hey, unless somehow they somebody angled it and, you know, but it would have to go through your house to get to the road, so. I didn't see see that, and but I I couldn't see how bright this gave me a better idea of what it looks like at night, it is bright, but it.
I'm old already, I'm on ninety five Bentry Drive, I'm some a mile up Parker Road from Timmy, I'm up at the end of the cul-de-sac, I got all woods behind me back there. I moved in summer of twenty twenty, I spent a ton of time at their house. My kids, I've never been A offended or put off by it, but I actually went ahead and installed some on my property because uh since summer of twenty twenty, we've been regular by a black bear, uh bobcat, red fox, I got two dogs, young kids. I like to keep my Henry in the safe, so uh I figured the lighting is a better option. Um so I actually installed very similar installations around my fire pit, I got ten acres of woods back there, that's electric company, so I get a lot of stuff, so. I wouldn't be affected by any changes in the law, I'd have to, you know, take a light, you know, yeah, so, but I actually kinda copied it.
Now, is a neighbor on the other side here tonight? Yeah.
Yes.
And you you have no problem with the lighting?
No, no, that's, I'm the one that I filed the complaint, yes.
And you have a problem with the lighting?
Yes, I have pictures, if anyone would like to see them, I can talk about that. If you wanna pass these on, these are pictures from my house, the first three are when the lights are off, which has been wonderful lately. I've been seeing lightning bugs, stars, the night is tranquil and peaceful, it's absolutely wonderful. I have a funny feeling the views from their yards might be a little bit different, they have one hundred year old maples sitting on their property as well as Peg from the other side, and they, the lights that she sees are very minimal, I have a picture of those as well.
I'm just trying to understand, where's your house in relation?
I'm right next door.
To the right. Okay. So which of butters were in support of you? Peg Grimaldi on the right.
She wasn't in support, she said she was willing to see a compromise reached, she didn't say that they should stay on.
Uh when I was living there, Peg came to me one time, I was out in my yard, I didn't solicitate her um her input, but she's, she was in her pool, and she called over to me and she said, I just want you to know, Anne, I have no problem with your lights, I like them. So she told me that personally when I was living there. So I just want you to know that, you know, she may not be here, and she may have said that, she did tell me that she liked our lights and that she had no problem with our lights being on at that time.
I do have a picture from Peg's angle as well, the second board that's coming around are four different views. They are views that I see all the time that are extremely bright, I cannot sit out and enjoy the night, if you, when that comes around, you'll see it. And after you look at that one, I have a third one, that has.
The question is, why, why wait seven years before?
It wasn't quite seven years, and our Duquette, I don't know his first name, used to be the other, yeah, Kevin. And I had complained with Kevin, he wrote back to me, which I have an email, and he said, I cannot find any findings as to your uh anything against the lights. So recently, with the new person here, I was looking at old emails, and I called up the new gentleman, and he said, oh no, that's not the law, and he read that if you're object, if you object to them, then you can file no litigation.
The neighbor is not a person, it says objectionable to a residential area, which is sort of a not a person per se.
But you can see how bright those are from my perspective, and I think, you know, Tim and Paul, you guys can all take a look, I have a funny feeling that the lights that you guys see are not as bright as what I'm seeing, because we do not have any maples in our yard, that we see those lights directly.
Do you have any outside lighting?
I have some on my deck, Tim.
Okay, and all throughout your fence?
Um none that glare or shine, no, and they are not even pathway lights. You cannot even use them to guide yourself. I also see the lights from inside the house, they're in my kitchen, in the bedrooms, in the living room.
See them, but they're not shining in your.
They're not, well, look at those pictures of them, they are bright, so. I cannot enjoy the morning light, and additionally, I have some, the night light, I'm sorry, it's late morning, it feel like it's morning all day long. Um additionally, um I do have a couple of pictures from the neighbor's yard as well as inside my house that you can see.
You don't have any like site easement or anything on their property?
Any what?
They call it a site easement, the right to have a certain view, um easement, in terms, I know you're upset that you can't see wildlife, but.
Wildlife, lightning bulbs, this this, I feel like I'm at Bradley Airport, a couple neighbors. I mean, a couple neighbors that have been over have made comments that were on a Vegas strip or that were at an airport, and those are from neighbors. I did not get them to write statements, but those are other neighbors that have been in my yard, and they've seen the lights, they are extremely bright.
They may be bright, I I mean, I I but I I don't see them as lighting up your backyard.
You can put this in as.
No, but I guess objectionable is.
This is, when I said there are lights in your backyard, I mean.
You have to show me that, Tim, I'm not aware of that, I have lights that are on a pathway, but I don't have any that you see from your house.
We're just trying to clarify that you have your own brightness in your backyard.
But I don't, you're forcing me to look through lights. Those are my pathway lights, but he had to walk to his backyard to even see this, he cannot see those from his yard.
We're not asking you to turn your lights off.
I get that, I'll be more than happy to turn them off, Beth, if you get rid of Las Vegas Strip.
I don't want to disturb you, any, any of you other guys have any questions about this?
Well, here, I'm sorry, there's one other slide, this is from inside my house and Peg's.
Because I have, I have something I'd like to say, but I don't wanna say.
But this is all, so let me show you last set, and this is from Peg's house, who she said they looked nice. So two of them, two of them from inside my house. Yeah, two are inside my house, and the other two are from Peg's view, and you can see her view is quite different than my view. And I haven't seen the one Beth from your backyard, I'm assuming yours is not as bright as mine either, with your huge makes of your backyard.
I can show it to you in one second.
You know, my guess is that you guys are never gonna agree as to of, you know, a- 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 as to whether or not you're entitled to have the positions that you're taking. I'm just gonna speak sort of personally, you know, that.
Got it.
On the one hand, I am, I am loathe to restrict people's property rights, I'm a big defender of property rights, and everybody that knows me well knows, that's how I feel about things. Uh and on the other hand, um I I like to uh I like to tread by way of reasonableness in my life. And uh the way I look at things like this is that both of you have a viewpoint that has some validity to it. Uh and that uh when you decide to live in a community with other people, and you move onto a street, and you decide that you're gonna live and have neighbors with each other and have driveways and patios in close proximity, knowing that things that other people do, that they have the right to do, you may not like. And conversely, you may decide that you wanna do things that they may not like, but that what you gotta do overall is try to modulate how much of that you do, so everybody gets along. Otherwise, the best thing to do is move out in the countryside, you've got ten acres of land, you can do whatever the hell you want, put up as many lights as you want, and nobody will complain, but when you live in a neighborhood, you you sort of give that right up, in my personal viewpoint, you sort of give that up. So my suggestion is that the parties here work something out. I personally think you got beautiful lights, they're a little bright, they're a little bright. And I think that if every night I looked out the window and saw a lit up yard, that that might wear on me over time. Even though I know that you have the right to do that, and I probably wouldn't be hurt, I probably wouldn't come and complain, I just live with it. Or maybe one day I'd come down and have a beer with you and say, you know what, your lights are a pain in the ass. You know, and and I'd like it if maybe you'd do something. That would be a better suggestion than ha- than coming here and having a zoning board of appeals, which really doesn't deal with stuff like this, you know, we're, we're really here to to consider relief under the zoning bylaws, not really to overrule building commissioners. And I suspect that the building commissioner in this case made is really, I'm not speaking for him, but I suspect this is the easy way out. Let the C A deal with it, I don't wanna get involved.
Told us.
Okay, so I'd like you to do the same thing. I'd like you guys to work it out, you can put a dimmer on that thing maybe, and maybe dim it down just a little bit, come up with a a level of brightness that she can live with and you can live with and still have your lights?
I would say that if I was dealing with someone that I trusted, I would agree with you. But I know for a fact that this is the not, this is not the first time that she has called about my property doing things that are on code.
Yeah.
Tim, there are still other violations against you.
Yeah, I know, because I had to fight them after you called the town about my greenhouse, about how you argued about how close I was putting a patio in my yard.
About the leaves that were in the yard in the back, about how you came and told me, I wish you had done this differently.
Okay, well, let's, let's not let it go. We're, we're here to deal with these lights.
And I just don't know, let's just say I put it on a dimmer. At what point does she call the town and say, no, that's still too bright?
What I'm gonna suggest is that you get together and and agree with each other that you're both gonna try to be reasonable. You're gonna try to live with the fact that you you chose to live in a neighborhood where someone might move in with something that you don't like, and you chose to move into a neighborhood where it was possible that one of your neighbors may not like what you're doing and have a complaint, that's just what living in the community is all about. So rather than litigate it in front of a zoning board, really doesn't wanna deal with it either, and isn't really skilled at this sort of thing, because we deal with land use, and this is more, this is more rules and regulations, poorly written at that.
Excuse me, how do you lift the cease and desist order if you don't make a recommendation?
I mean, the, I. We, we will either approve the the inspector's decision, or we will overturn the inspector's decision. That could be appealed to a court of law, you know, whatever we decide, our next step is to a court of law, um you, the the appeal period. That isn't gonna do anything for the relationship. No, I understand, but you have a right to take it. I wanted to hear from other people who are in favor and the people who are against, so uh I heard from you. Yeah, Jeff Pendor, I live at one oh five Brookhaven Drive, I've been to Tim's house, um like he does, he's got up lights, I've got lights in my backyard and around my pool.
I don't want this to happen.
I don't want this to happen, I don't want this to happen to me that all of a sudden I get a neighbor that moves in and says, I don't like your lighting around your pool, but.
Remind Halloween.
But again, I'm wondering how bright yours might be. Your pool area.
Well, but that's.
These are views again from my house.
This is in my backyard, my neighbors on both sides can see everything, so.
And I, I would like to add that these have been there since two thousand and seventeen.
But again, like I said, I had filed before, when you guys.
Have I been told or asked to remove those lights since twenty seventeen till the time I sold it to Tim?
All right, when you moved, Anne came over and told me that the Bellagio was staying. So that was a patient to me that those lights were not going anywhere.
It doesn't sound like you guys wanna wanna do it peacefully, so maybe, or just thought of.
Hey, Mark, Mark.
You wanna hear from other people?
I, I mean, if you could make a decision too, the compromise is dimming them, I mean, I am willing to compromise, but let's see what we can do.
Hey, Mark, can you?
I live at uh twenty three High Pine Circle, um I've been to the property many times, um while Timmy was the owner, and while Paul was the owner. It's impeccably kept property, this is, these are good neighbors.
Two years, we got along, our kids played together, it was great, and it just sort of started going downhill last year. So for two years, their kids were over my house playing all the time, and it just, over the last year, it went downhill.
And when did that start, Barb?
When did it start, Beth?
You started calling the town on us.
No, Beth, that's not true.
You called the town on us, Barbara.
Does anybody else wanna say anything?
Just give your name and address.
Sheriff Benoit, I live at one forty nine Patterson House, and I think my concern, and it's probably not something you can address, is that there's an issue with the ordinance.
Oh, I think the major issue with the.
X number of decibels, but there's nothing there, and so what I think what you're hearing is that it puts all of us at risk. Because, you know, we have floodlights that go on.
Yeah, I mean, the the problem I have with the word objectionable is is is, I mean, it's very subjective.
Bears scared me, man, I'll be out there with my Henry in two seconds.
If I can, it's a lousy bylaw, and and. Personally, I don't intend to to, I would not get behind what, I'm just speaking for myself. I I don't support a unilateral, somebody gets to unplug their lights when somebody else doesn't like them. But on the other hand, you know, I I am mindful that that it's better if you would try to work it out yourselves, especially if you used to be friends, go be friends again.
So um I'm Bailey Mitchell, the planning director in town, and um I have several bylaw amendments going before the town council. Um I have put together the uh like process of, you know, updating and amending the bylaws. Um if anyone's interested in that, you're welcome to petition the town council for an amendment to this bylaw. Um doesn't have to come to me first, it just goes to them, um and they can essentially uh from there, they'll go through the process, and I I'm more than willing to work with anyone that's got the time to do that, because unfortunately, I don't have the time to take on something this small, and the only reason I'm saying small is because it's very small in terms of uh the scale of things that I typically deal with, so, and I think that's what the board is trying to suggest is. Is it's not really, the the bigger issue of the bylaw is not something that they would handle, it's something that well, would have to go through the amendment process with the town council, so um again, happy to reach or to work with anyone, if you wanna reach out to me in my office. Um I can find some time to at least work with someone, um but I don't have the time to do it on my own, so. But back to the, thanks, back to the chair, thank you.
So, I mean, and I understand, and I I I do have my own opinions about the this bylaw, because I do think it's extremely vague. If you take it to a court, it's, it'll be ruled unconstitutionally vague, if you don't know what behavior you have to do to comply with the law and what is complying and not complying, so the whole purpose of a law is to to make it.
Definition.
You have an idea of what is a violation, what's not a violation, and here it could be, you have your holiday lights up, and I don't like to certain holiday light, light.
And here it could be, you have your holiday lights up, and I don't like certain holiday light, lighting displays. And I, I say, well, sorry. And then here, I don't think it's unreasonable. It's probably on, I don't know what time they go on in the winter time. Uh, do they go on it like, are they on like a timer timer or is it by light?
No, it's a timer.
Like, I think they went on at five and they turned off at ten.
And.
Cause they're on for about five hours and then obviously I assume they get go on after dark now and do they still turn on at about ten or eleven?
They haven't been on.
Last two months, but.
Okay.
But yeah, they still shut off.
I was during, during the day, so I couldn't tell, you know, it's, lighting is a tough thing to call. You can't see the lights, but I could.
That was the problem I always had, you know, we get the cease and desist order that says our lights are objectional. We didn't know why, we didn't know how, we didn't know which ones were, we just knew that we were.
The building inspector did all he could do based on that, so.
Well, the other building, the prior building inspector made a decision. She could have appealed that decision. She didn't. Um, just like you have the right to appeal this decision, uh, if it would have come before the board, maybe you would have been the, the defendant in that particular case. Uh, but, but she chose not to file the appeal in that particular case. So it has come up before that, you know, prior building inspector didn't agree with, with the current building inspector. Uh, this decided, um, because he didn't take any action, felt there was nothing objectionable or in violation of the ordinance. So you had uh, different opinions even among our, our building inspectors.
Right, and he just didn't, I, unfortunately, I wasn't told of all the reasons why you could file an appeal. So the new one did tell me all the reasons, so.
Yeah, you can file an appeal. Um, I, you know, as I said, it'll go before a court. I think there's a good chance that this might get stricken altogether. Um, this being un, unusually vague, um, because I think it's very vague. And I don't think it, you know, the whole purpose of a, of a law is to tell you what's prohibited and what's allowed. And when it's extremely vague, and I couldn't tell you what, I couldn't tell you what this is trying, most of the towns where I see it. I mean, I've had people's like very well lit homes, other people don't like lighting. I, you know, I can't direct that, but most of them, they want to keep the lumens uh, on your property and off other properties. Um, the fact that you may not, I may have a bright, modern house and I like the hell lit out of it and it may look like a Christmas tree. And you just don't like the look of my house and, and have to look out the window and see that. I can't do, stop that. The zoning allows someone to build a house that is an ultra modern house in a Georgian neighborhood. I may think it's objectionable, it's terrible, but they, they own the property, they can do what they want. And so.
So why don't we move this thing to a.
Yeah, but I, I want to make sure anybody who was here to speak is given an opportunity to speak that's.
I'm going to my one forty-nine Patterson Avenue. So, so this doesn't get changed, this zoning, vague zoning rule. So do we start?
Can't change anything here.
I could just either agree with or not agree with the building inspector and why.
Make this a hypothetical statement. It doesn't get changed. So does that allow somebody who's objectionable to go through the town and start pointing out neighbors with lights? And they start to have to deal with the same thing, waste.
Theoretically.
Waste their time to a meeting that can't do anything.
But you know what? The first time I've seen it, I, I don't think there's a movement in town.
That's right.
And Mark, there might be.
There might never know.
You never know. There might be, might show I live on the opposite side of town.
It's possible.
But that's what you're opening this up for.
Yeah.
Is that now anybody, when they know that if that. You may have somebody that says, okay, my neighbor has, you know, I'm an atheist and they have Christmas. I'm objectionable.
We, we get it.
You guys are, you know, again, it's not.
Well, it doesn't say person, it says area.
I know, right. That was probably.
A residential area.
Residential area that's near a commercial area, because that lights can't shine into their property.
And that, but that's typically what's here, but this is extremely.
Who else is, who else hasn't been heard from?
Anybody else want to speak?
Anyone who has, can you put your name and?
Yeah, it's a show of hands. How many people are?
For the record.
In support of the jurors here tonight in terms of the thing? And how many are agreeing with the?
I didn't bring a pasting.
No, 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 I understand. I just want to find out what the.
What's gonna affect me, that's all. I'm right down the road.
What the people are.
By the way, it's, it's not binding.
It's not binding at all. It's just, I'm trying to find out, is that there are people who back up your support. I want to hear what they have. They, as well, because they may have different reasons than, than you.
No, I did not ask my neighbors to write anything down.
That's why I paid four hundred and fifty dollars to advertise it in the reminder.
Well, if everybody's heard from. I'd like to make a motion that we, that we make a motion to deal with most, because it's eight o'clock.
Just have to, I just ask you all those.
Sure, please.
So you received the appeal on April thirteenth?
Yes.
And then you filed that your appeal on May third? Is that the date appears as May third?
Yeah.
That's when you typed it in? But then you filed the application May thirtieth? Do you know why?
Uh, it was during tax season.
Okay.
And we have a newborn. Uh, we had a lot of things going on. For the first, till April, I was basically either working or away from the house. And then it took us a few days to get all the platters list, to get the post office information for everyone that I needed to send the letters to, to contact reminder. All the, the, the steps that took to get the appeal ready and working.
All right, thanks.
One last thing else, if I could, if you read that again. It says shall not be objectionable to any residential area. It would seem like it's not objectionable to the residential area. No offense, only to one person.
We have to define residential area.
Correct, but that wouldn't be one person. It would be.
I don't know. I, I mean, once again, it's very, you got residential area.
Whatever this.
Right.
They're not a violation.
Your point is noted.
Think Charles has something to say. I don't know.
Mark, can you hear me? I'm, I'm on.
For a while.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Oh, you can hear me? Mark, my only question is, is the building, so, so I, I find it interesting that the disparity in building inspectors and presumably their decisions. Is the building inspector present to explain why he felt it was objectionable to this residential area?
Didn't.
No, he didn't, he didn't give us the, the property owners even a description as to why.
Okay. Charles, it would appear as though the building inspector just wanted a.
He just read the rule.
Send it down. Wait, let us deal with it.
Yeah, he said it was vague and that was, that was pretty much all.
I would. Thank you.
Everybody has. Yeah.
So, Mark, I, I move to, to, um, close the public hearing.
Okay, second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So those unanimous? So do we have any discussion among the board members?
I, I think we're, we should not be wading into deep waters. Uh, I, I am normally don't like opposing building inspectors, but it's pretty clear to me here that the building inspector didn't know what to do with a poorly written law. Uh, and decided to have us deal with it. And I, I feel as though the building inspector's uh, decision needs to be turned down. Until, and I think that the town should pursue the uh, rehabilitation of the language in that bylaw. So that we're not gathered here again, the neighbors pitted against neighbors. It becomes rather clear what's allowed, what's not.
Jim, do you have any comment?
Yeah, no, I deal with it a lot. I mean, lighting that's dark sky compliant or foot candles and lumens. I mean, there's a, a, a lot of ways to measure lights and objectionable isn't probably one of them. I certainly don't know in residential area. Um, obviously, if I was there, I'd like to enjoy the night with the moonlights too, if I have a hot tub. And I think it's out in your backyard. I, I certainly see the position that both people are in. But I think the question before us at this point is whether we're in a position to sustain or overrule the building commissioner's determination. That determination right now is just based on the letter of the law that says shall not be objectionable to any residential area. And I think I've come before and before, we all don't know what objectionable, objectionable to one person, obviously and clearly is different than what's objectionable to another person. But as a board of appeals, we just have to read the law as it stands and whether or not we feel that we can support the law as it is now or not. The findings as they are now based on that law, that's unfortunately based on the letter of the law and the way that's written. I don't think we're in a position to do that, not because we don't believe this, maybe, again, just my opinion, maybe objectionable to you. We're not saying that it should, can't be objectionable, it may not be objectionable. We are just saying that perhaps the, the way it's written now, we're not in a position to make that determination.
Charles, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I mean, I, I look at it and, and you're reading, you're trying to interpret the laws that currently exist. And I would say that, um, you know, looking at the residential neighborhood in which it is, which, you know, shake a road residential neighborhood might be different than rural. Um, I think that, that two things. One, that the, the previous building commissioner or commissioners chose not to say that it was objectionable to the residential area. And two, um, that there is in fact lighting in that street and, and in fact, in the, the complainant's yard. There is maybe not similar lighting, but it's lighting. Um, I think it's, I, 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 I wouldn't find this objectionable in this instance.
Right, all the same. I mean, I, I have no objection to what we're doing.
Yeah, I think in, in my opinion, in the, you know, the circumstances of, of this case, I don't know that it's generally accepted is objectionable. Um, I think a lot of people do have uplighting on their homes. Um, some people, they have uplighting on things that I don't find particularly attractive, but I'm not the fashion police. Um, and I don't want to get into a situation where we become fashion police, so to speak. Uh, when I have a free society, I do agree with Dan that people should try to work out their differences. But sometimes people become a part or they, you know, I don't know what causes that, but it does happen. And people who are friends turn into, you know, I've had this argument, we got people uh, do things and, you know. It ends up being World War III out of spite and, and I understand that. But in this particular case, I don't particularly find it to be unreasonably objectionable. It doesn't appear to light up your backyard. It does impact your view, but a lot of things impact your view. You're in a town that allows people to put homes and things up in their yards. And there's some things that get built in people's yards that frankly, I don't think look very nice, but they do think it looks very nice. And they light it up and make it look, you know, and sometimes, you know, nowadays you seem to get some of these displays that are quite, uh.
Traveling.
You know, they're probably a traffic hazard, uh, but nobody does, does anything. But I, in this particular case, I just don't find it, and I find there's a major problem, in my opinion, we have a major problem with this ordinance. If people start trying to enforce it as fashion police, it opens yourself up. Because I, I don't know that you could tell somebody what's reasonable, or I could tell somebody what's reasonable, that there, the standard isn't here.
It needs to be defined with lumens and a little bit of spill.
Spillover, you can do dark sky compliant, you can do foot candles, lumens.
Right.
There's a lot of things they could do to, to, to define it.
As a real estate developer, I'm held to that standard constantly with lighting analysis that I have to provide.
And most zoning ordinance, as I've seen, especially most of them have to do not with residential, but have to do with commercial against residential. And they do deal with lumens, they do deal with uh, off property and making sure the lighting stays uh, on the commercial property. Because a lot of times commercial property is operating twenty-four seven, so they have their lighting on twenty-four seven. It may, and if you're in a residential neighborhood, it may not go on to your property, but it sure sounds bright, but you're also next to a, you know, a business. You need a motion?
So wait, I would uh, then just take a vote. Somebody do a vote to approve the building inspector's decision. We'll vote on that motion and second it.
Oh, I can't, I'm the chairman, so.
We, we will approve the appeal to overturn the building inspector's decision.
I will make an option to overturn.
Right.
Building commissioners' uh, prohibition, what, what is the letter? I, I make that motion. Second?
I second.
Second.
All, all in favor will take a vote at time frame?
Aye.
Aye. Mark Bentley, aye.
Dan Plotkin, aye.
James Channing, aye.
Charles Gray, aye.
So noted five, nothing.
I really encourage you guys.
Hopefully we can come to a compromise.
I really hope you can. Next door to each other.
There's nothing preventing, again, additional action.
Yep, no, thank you very much.
Um, I wish you both the best of luck.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
How are you doing?
Got a question.
Been a week or.
Donating issue. I just have four. Strapped. On the wedding. Somebody's always worried. Go take a look at the property and I will make a, I'll make a call.
You're good, kids.
But that's only. Appreciate your time.
Mark, pleasure. You gotta go to the building.
It's been a long time no see. Whether it's him or the health department.
I don't have.
Where we said.
Believe you to believe that we deal with this sort of stuff, but we don't, we don't. Because I'm not for the health company. And they did a cease, a, a, a lean and clean.
Yeah.
And the property still looks bad. It's a fire hazard. I don't know where else to go.
We deal with where a building is on its side.
Okay.
We deal with side yard set then. We deal with, with accessory buildings.
Don't deal with that.
I'm fine here.
We deal with zoning bylaws.
That's fair.
So they're. Surely normally what happens, you, you ask the building inspector if, if writing.
No, I'm standing. No, thank you.
They, if they don't take action, you have so many days, they're in action.
Right.
File an appeal depending on.
The guy's driving. We'll show that to the building.
No, I said, Board of Health, but the Board of Health might have something to say about that.
I've already got. But we, I'm saying, I, I, okay.
But if they don't respond, you can do a formal request that they do something. If they don't respond, then you can either appeal it to the, like, there's different boards. We do zoning. Okay, the Board of Health, you can then take it, you can go to court. Well, no, you have a right to directly to court for damage action.
We're not even of, of, an enforcement body. We're a judicial body. We rule, we don't enforce. Whatever we say happens, if people decide not to do it, you can't do nothing you can do. All right, fair enough. Thanks. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, that was right there. I'll get it.
All right, we're ready to, ready to. After two.
For the record, the library closes at eight o'clock.
We gotta hurry up.
They don't stay open.
They don't stay open.
Um, they kick us out. So I just want to.
Hopefully it won't.
Put you on notice.
Thank you.
All guys.
We shut that door?
We cannot. If anybody was interested, you'd have to, you know, they open. Yeah, right like that.
Okay?
Yeah.
Good.
I want to, uh, have the clerk read the, it would be beating. I don't know if you were here when I announced earlier about, just, uh, we'll take the opponents first, give your name, address. Um, and what you're proposing. I will hear from people that were in support of the opponents. And then after they presented, we'll then give anybody who's in opposition to whatever you're proposing, their opportunity to speak. And if they bring up something that you didn't deal with in your initial, then you have a right to rebut what was proposed.
Great, all right, so.
If you can get it done by eight o'clock, if we can't, well, just have to get into the meeting till next time.
Um, so I'll just read the notice. The East Long Meadow, uh, zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on July tenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M. In the library conference room at the East Long Meadow Public Library, sixty Center Square, East Long Meadow, M A, zero one zero two eight. Ace Z V two, twenty twenty-three O two, a petition for variance under East Long Meadow zoning bylaws, chapter four fifty, three point three. One, chapter four fifty, five point six F one, chapter, chapter four fifty, five point seven eight. And chapter four fifty, uh, five point eight B three A. At five forty-six North Main Street, this is parcel I D two B seven six one. Located in the business zoning district applicant Western M A E E N L L C, two six Clark Street. Uh, Worcester, M A zero one six zero six.
So, good evening, gentlemen. My name is Seth Strout, and I'm an attorney with Fitzgerald Law with offices right over here at forty-six Center Square in East Long Meadow. Uh, I represent the petitioner, Western Mass E E N L L C, uh, who would be doing businesses Golden Nozzle Car Wash, which is an, a division of Noria Energy. Um, the property, as noted, is five forty-six North Main Street. Uh, the petitioner is proposing to acquire five forty-six Main Street under a purchase and sale. We're in the due diligence period. Um, approximately, um, two, two parcels, approximately two thirds of the site is a, um, one parcel. And the other third behind it is another parcel, zero laundering place. Those are both subject to the P N S and would be consolidated. Those are both subject to the PNS and would be consolidated, uh, to be developed as a Golden Nozzle Automated Car Wash, very similar to the Golden Nozzle Automated Car Wash that is not too far down the street on North Main Street here in East Long Meadow. The site has been most recently used as a flower and Christmas tree sales stand. The front parcel, as I mentioned, is own business and the back parcel, uh, zero under again, is own residential. The petitioner plans to seek a rezoning of the residential parcel to business and then consolidate both parcels through an A and R filing, uh, which would substantially reduce the extent of the variances being sought here tonight. Um, but because variances will still be required nonetheless, we want to start with a variance process before going through the zone change and special permit process. Uh, because if we can't get the variances, then it doesn't make sense to go through, um, the subsequent processes. So I will summarize the variances that we're seeking and then I'm going to turn it over. By the way, I should have introduced the other folks with me, my apologies. Um, my colleague Rachel Fancy, who works, uh, with me at Fitzgerald Law. Um, Richard Smith, who's the tall gentleman standing behind us, is with, uh, uh, Nouria, uh, and oversees Golden Nozzle operations in this region. And Dave Feist, uh, who is with CMG, who is, uh, our engineering group, and he'll walk you through the site plan. So, um, there's four variances that we're seeking. I'll go through them high level in order of what I think is the substance of the, the most substantial first um, and the least substantial last. So, under the zoning bylaw, there is a, uh, you need a, a hundred foot buffer um, between, uh, from a residential district. And as I mentioned, um, the parcel, the site that we're proposing developing is comprised of a residential parcel and a business parcel. And so, um, yeah, there is absent consolidation of those two parcels. We would need a hundred feet between the operation of the car wash and the border of the residential property that we're acquiring. Um, if we're able to acquire that, um, change the zone, then that hundred foot would push back to the midline, uh, in the street behind it. But we will, which would cure the hundred foot issue for the car wash. But if you look at the pertinent uses, which the, um, uh, building commissioner has determined is where you measure it from, we would still need a minor variance even with the consolidation of the, um, residential parcel with the commercial parcel. So make a little more sense when, uh, Dave shows it on the map. But that is, that is the primary variance that we require is the, um, relief from the hundred foot, um, setback from the border of a residential lot from, um, the business operations. There are three other variances. One is a sign setback from North Main Street. There, a 25 foot setback is required. The current sign on the property is basically, uh, at the street. We're looking to, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. We're looking to replicate in the same exact spot, the existing sign, same size, just different, um, obviously different advertising. So we're looking to formalize what is now a prior non-conforming, uh, pre-existing non-conforming use through a variance process and have the same sign that's currently there, which would be within the, uh, 25 foot, um, setback from North Main Street. There is also a, uh, 25 foot buffer between, um, 12.5 feet of which needs to be vegetative, being in business in a residential district. And so, um, when you look at our, um, exist with the, without the, the consolidation of the parcels and the zone change, we would not have the 25 feet between our own parcel. But the residential parcel would serve as an unofficial, um, buffer between the, um, commercial use, the business use and the residential use behind. If we do get the zone change, then that variance is not required because we'll have plenty of space to do the 25 foot buffer, 12.5 of which would be vegetated. Uh, finally, there is a, um, and we're, this may be just a technicality. We're not sure it even applies, but the, um, there is a 10 foot landscape buffer requirement between a street, um, and the site, laundry in place is a paper street. If that, um, landscape buffer, um, would be required, um, the current site plan, we have a five foot buffer, um, laid out rather than a 10 foot. And so, um, we would need a five foot relief on that, um, landscape buffer between the site and the paper street. So, um.
Not to interrupt, but to be exact, it has to be 4.9 because that's the actual measurement.
Sure, 4.9, thank you. Um, well, 5.1 variance. Thank you. Um, so with that, maybe, um, Dave, if you could just walk through the site plan.
Before he does it, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you see laid out the relief you need. Uh, and why you need it. Is there going to be a connection between that and the requirements to get a variance in Massachusetts?
Yes, it's fair. So our petition, which we've submitted, on each one of these points, we've articulated the rationale for the variance, um, under the criteria in each one of those.
For me, that's more important than that.
Okay, um, yeah, let, um.
I can kind of.
If, if, I think it's important, don't spend much time on the operations, but if you can just lay out where the variances are, because I think, um, Dan, the most critical one is going to be the hundred foot. And I can articulate for you why that, um, why that.
But it's all described in one D, correct?
Is this all the same owner of the residential and the?
Right.
It's our separate parcels with same owner. And we have both parcels under agreement.
Is that residential, legitimate parcel?
Yeah.
It's actually partially zoned business and partially owned resident, resident.
Change properly is really what happens.
It's my front yard.
Yeah.
So, uh. Well, I just want to, again, I just want to, I'm curious about, you're asking for what is a, what should be in Massachusetts, a relatively difficult thing to accomplish, a variance. Um, it's not a special permit, it's not an exemption, it's not a license, not a finding. It's a variance and and they're often handed out, but generally under fairly four corner arguments, that's what I want to hear.
Can, can I happen to show you? Yeah, go, why don't you briefly walk through and then address that?
Right, so my name is David Feist, I'm a project civil engineer. Uh, just walked through a little quickly, um, just since the existing conditions, the map, the survey. You'll see the two properties in question is this piece here, uh, which is currently zoned business. Then there's a smaller rectangular piece here that has the big zone. You can see the Emmeretta Avenue and the London Place right of ways. And adjacent, I've highlighted just in blue, this is the existing business zone here. This property is business zone and then this is the business zone line as well. So the proposed project, uh, proposes to, to combine the two lots. For use and same thing, you can see here is the, you know, this rectangular piece here, London Place, Emmeretta Avenue. Um, basically, we've highlighted, uh, the existing 100 foot buffer zone, um, that was mentioned is here. So the existing with a proposed car wash building would be located, would be within that area. Uh, basically, that's with this parcel here, if it is to be zoned, that would bring the line back towards the center of the right of way here. So the proposed 100 foot zone line would end up back in this highlighted area here. So you can see that the building in the front, the majority of the main car wash site would be out of that area. However, just the appearances to the use, basically the drive-through and just a portion of one of the order signs would be within that 100 foot zone. Um, the other variance of the question currently where the zone line is here, there's a 25 foot buffer zone required, um, we're providing 12 and a half feet. If that was to be moved, the rezoning, we'd be, have a much greater, probably 50 foot landscape buffer. So we'd be able to do that with the rezoning of the parcel. Uh, the existing sign location is right here. Um, it is located almost right on the property line on the front. That is proposed to remain in the same location. And the, the, um, 10 foot setback along the frontage of a property on London Place here, um, currently there's a 4.9, uh, enough room with the current layout of our proposed car wash to provide landscaping along this area. And that's where the relief is requested from the fourth variance requirement. And just in general, the project is proposed with an entrance in. We have approximately 18 cars stacking. Uh, customers would enter the car wash here, exit along this area where they'd have access to eight vacuums along this side is here. And the full access along London, London Place, um, with a full access curb cut here. This existing paper street leads down and be, and again, there'd be some additional landscaping provided. And just as a, just to give you sort of an idea of the vision for the, the end product of the project, just to see the, basically the increased buffer to the residential area is, I know the area in the back now, I believe, is used seasonally for the sale of Christmas trees and some other, um, stuff. Basically, that area would, uh, have the potential to be landscaped, um, along with a small retaining wall that some buffer, uh, between our project and the rear. And again, the, the new zone line with the proposed rezoning would be here. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, that you may have.
I don't know that you'll be a landowner, but maybe you will. Maybe we can get back to the earlier question I had.
Sure. So, um, there are several criteria, as you referenced, one of which is, um, how circumstances unique to this land would mean a substantial hardship to us absent the relief. I, I think there's two answers to that question. One is, um, uh, Golden Nozzle is an existing property under with a successful operation. One would question, well, why do you want to, um, open one down the street? There's significant demand, um, for that, um, uh, car wash and the traffic flow, um, is, has become an issue, getting people in and out, both on the roads and living in business. So there's enough demand, um, in town that if we can spread the, uh, demand for the car wash.
Wait a minute, I, I apologize for interrupting.
Yeah.
I'm asking you to, to, to articulate to me how your variance request comports with the requirements under the law for variance. Whether or not you want to build a second car wash because your other one is busy has zero to do with that.
Yep.
How your buffers work, zero to do with that. Getting a zone change, zero to do with that. We're not, we're not in the zone change process here. We're just here to find out whether we can give relief for those who are aggrieved under the zoning law. You need to show us how you're aggrieved.
Well, we're aggrieved because.
But you need to do that within the context of showing us how your request for a variance works.
Right, no, I understand. So without the requested relief, this part, due to the pre-existing non-conforming use and the, the overlay of the current zoning on it, there's a very limited use that can be made of due to the size of this parcel and the proximity of the residential parcel that's been effectively part of it. You heard reference to the fact that the Christmas tree, the, the residential parcel behind is being used for storage of Christmas trees. It's a residential lot being used for a commercial purpose right now. Because the lot is so small and absent the relief that we're requesting, the size of the lot, there's very limited use that can be.
So you're saying it's a unique shape?
It's a unique shape and size, um, with the, when you overlay the setback of 25 in the back, 25 sign in the front, 10 on the side and 100 feet from a residential, it's virtually useless. Um, it, the only use is a pre-existing non-conforming. But if you try to, um, sell it and do something else, you're not going to be able to effectively with those restrictions because of the small envelope that you're left with based on those, the combination of those four setbacks for signage, buffering and distance from another zone. The other question is, you know, with granting a relief takeaway from the intent and, or purpose of the bylaw, one of the issues that we're, um, faced with is the, the question of what cost, where does the hundred foot drawn from? And so the town is understandably of the view that it's drawn from the operations, which has been kind of broadly defined as not just the building, but drive aisles, pay stations. If you draw it from the building itself, um, it's a much, the relief is much less. And so, um, when you look at, um, what we're effectively looking for, um, especially with a rezone, you, you're not going to have, the building would be 100 feet away from, um, the rezone residential district. But once you take into effect the drive aisle and the pay station, which we don't think is the intent of the law, but we understand it's not entirely clear, you're effectively distant from the residential district. And then on the question of, um, nobody else being hurt if the town granted the requested zoning relief, you just heard that, um, we'll be implementing significant landscape buffering, which is much more a- attractive and, and, um, effective as a buffer than what is currently there, which is not only overgrown and unkempt, but also being used, um, on the residential piece as a commercial use. Um, this will be a very, um, attractive landscape buffer that will buffer the residential zone from the business operation. Only.
This is once you acquire the residential property.
We have it under agreement.
And get the zone changed so that the residential zone gets pushed farther back from your site.
Correct. I mean, if we were, if we were unable to rezone it and get the variances, we would still, we don't intend to use, if you can see from the map, we don't intend to have any business operations on the residential piece. The main reason to rezone it would be to make the relief on the buffer less. So that entire residential piece is going to be a, a landscaped buffer that will be, um, an actual buffer versus the current use, which is a commercial use on a residential piece. Um, and we'll be, you know, uh, there are existing trees and we're happy to, keep in mind, we'll have to, um, work with the town both on the zone change and we need a special permit. And we'll be happy to, you know, accommodate requests by the town for effective buffering and sound control during that process and think.
The buffer and all that stuff, that, that's really planning board stuff, am I right? I mean, we don't, we don't really deal with that. What, the way I look at these things is that you're here to ask for relief under the zoning bylaw and that relief is taking the form of variance, which subjects you to much tougher requirements than the other forms of relief.
Yeah.
It, okay, and, and so I'm just, and I'm not trying to be difficult.
Yeah.
It's just that I want to focus on that. That's to me.
Yeah, and the hardship is essentially, I mean, we luckily have a, we're here as petitioner, um, with the authority of the owner. The hardship is really on the owner. We're a prospective buyer and are in a due diligence period. But the hardship is that it's essentially an unsellable, unusable piece of property as it is, um, absent relief from the significant, um, setback requirements.
Well, yeah, well, it's the, the shape of the lot is so small. Um, I think is one of the issues of shape and it's sort of unique because it's, I mean, but the other issue that I always had is a question is whether these would fall under uh, pre-existing, uh, uses and alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming use under 48 six, the first paragraph. If you have a finding that is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what was there before, because sometimes you can avoid the whole issue of variance altogether. Um, because all you're looking for in essence is a special permit and what an impact on the neighborhood that it is.
Yeah, but you're going from various trees to a car wash.
Well, no, but it's a, it's a full-time plant sales place. So they, they sell, uh, plants and, and, you know, you know, garden, you know, garden stuff that goes with, with plants.
They've been doing this since, before 1953.
Yeah, it was before zoning was a town. So they're, they're pre-existing non-conforming use. And so one of the issues is if you're going to change a use, which you are changing here, one of the questions is, is it? Well, is it a resident? I don't know, that's up to you. It's what's the effect is, the, the standard is whether or not it, it results in a bigger impact on the neighborhood than what was there before. And so it's going to be important, the hours of operation, the hours of operation. Like, one of the questions I had as on that laundry again, do you use that for your access to your homes?
Yes.
It's not a paper street.
Right.
It's a real street.
If they use that, he's, he's, he's on my behalf.
Yep.
Um, my name is Bree Barnes. I'm actually a resident of Jamaica Plain out in Eastern Mass. Um, this is basically my family. So I'm speaking on Patricia's. Um, this is basically my family, so I'm speaking on Patricia's behalf.
Right.
Um, the biggest concerns about these variances, uh, for the residents of Two Landergan, uh, has to do with public safety. Uh, between the two residences that are Landergan residences, uh, there are four minor children, all of whom must walk down Landergan to get on their bus, to get the mail. Um, and we feel as if four feet worth of buffer is not enough on the road. Additionally, there are concerns about the amount of, uh, the amount of potential visibility into homes and into front yards um, from, you know.
Obviously would be a concern, whether they got a special permit or a variance.
Right, right, but that, that, that is the reason for the opposition to the variance is because of concern, public safety concerns with the buffers primarily.
That's also where the ambulance comes down.
Yeah, if they're using Landergan as an exit, and I have an emergency at my house, they only know to come in that way. So if we've got cars backing up waiting to get out of there, and I have a fire truck or an ambulance trying to come in.
Can't park on Landergan Drive.
No, they're, they're, they're.
It'd be entrance.
I don't know, do you know Lombard Avenue? Have you ever tried getting out of Lombard Avenue? No, it's not.
If you take a left hand.
If you take a left, it's great, if you're going right, you can't. But if you're tying up Landergan Place, and this is the issue I have with the flower place, because I was calling the cops on him constantly, he parked his truck in the middle of Landergan.
Well, that's why they, when I heard the thing, paper street, I don't think that's.
Yeah, it's a private, it's a private way.
Paper street typically doesn't exist on the ground.
Yeah.
There is, houses actually use this to access their home.
It's my driveway, but they would park the car, truck in the middle.
Can I say something real quick?
Private way.
And, uh, to, to sort of try and bring it back to the variance. Um, in the last five years, the experience of folks living at Two Landergan has been that they, they haven't been using the residential lot, uh, commercially. Like, they haven't been bringing people there for Christmas tree sales anecdotally and.
Well, I think they've been using it for storage.
But they have.
They, they store that. That's why it's fed. And that's only from, what, November to December?
Yeah.
And also, it hasn't happened for like five years now.
Yeah, they, he stopped doing it a couple, few years now.
Covid. Stopped.
I understand, stopped a lot of things.
Yeah.
I understand. But I, but I just wanted to clarify that Landergan is not a paper street, it actually.
Thank you.
Private way, it may not be a public way, uh, they have a right to use it because they bought on it. See, this whole area, just for the history of it, and I think I've explained, it was laid out back over a hundred years ago. And so a lot of these streets in this whole area, I mean, it's, it's not just Landergan, there's tons of them all around this area where streets were laid out by developers before there was a subdivision control. And they set these streets in with lots, um, and now land has become more valuable, so a lot of people had bought these lots with the hope of building their dream homes, but then the depression hit, and then their dreams went out the window. Um, they couldn't build homes, so these things sat and.
Never got.
They never got taken care of.
My parents never.
They've got all these streets that are back there, and now all of a sudden, somebody wants to build something. Well, because you're on a plan and you have, everybody has rights, uh, and you can't block off those streets. So that's gonna be one of the issues that they can't.
Because it's not, it's not a two-way street, it's a driveway.
Well, it, it probably was laid out much larger than a driveway on that plan, and that's where they can't block that off.
Right.
The other concern too.
Paper street is, we did ask the town for a determination on what the status of the street was, and we heard from them that that's where the determination came from, a paper street.
Yeah, I don't think a paper street is one that shows on paper, it doesn't exist on the ground. So a lot of times you have these streets that were laid out in the wayback, nobody ever cut the streets in, or ever put a house there, nobody ever did anything, and you look at it and it looks just like a woods. Uh, that's a paper street. But the theory, the theory is that those rights still exist, so I could come back a hundred years later and say, hey, I'm gonna build a house off of that subdivision, I may have to now put this street in up to today's standard. But that, that, you, you know, I would still have the legal right to use that quote paper street, but I'd have to make it before I can build a house, I'd have to bring it up to today's standards. So getting it, it's part of the public safety.
The other concern too I have is in the wintertime, when you have a nice day, I go by the four corners and those lines, you can't even get into the gas station. The lines are so long. So now you have a short span between your entrance and Friendly's, and then you got Gerard. And what's to stop them from blocking Gerard to come around the corner to get their car washed? Which that also.
Supposedly why they have eighteen spots on the, on the. But these are also, I, I'm sympathetic to everything I'm hearing, and, and I'm sympathetic to your desire to deploy the property that you have under contract, I'm a real estate developer, I've done stuff like that. So I'm trying to think about it as objectively as I possibly can. I, I still really would rather focus less on how people feel and what they anticipate traffic might be like, because we're not a traffic board here.
Right.
You know, we're not a planning board, we don't review traffic reports. We view, we, as I said in the earlier petition, we're supposed to be looking at whether or not we can grant you what you want based on what the law says, and I'm not convinced yet. I'm not convinced that everybody that has a small parcel of land can then argue, well, it's so small that I can't do anything else with it, so I wanna build a car wash on it, or a pharmacy, and it's bigger, and if you let me, that's what I'm gonna do, I just don't, I. You never let. As you've gotten non-conforming structure and use there, it's been going on forever. And that's why one of the issues was whether or not you could use forty A six finding that's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
You're not gonna argue that a car wash is not substantially more detrimental to any neighborhood with a straight face, you know? More than, than what's going on there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, that, I mean, we're here, and what we hoped to do, and I understand, uh, I, I understand the concerns, was, um, we, we do believe that, um, the investment that can be put into this property would make it um, more beneficial to the abutters, and we're happy to listen to their, um, concerns and see if there could be, um, improvements. We had sent a mailing out and hoped to, um, speak with, um, neighbors in advance.
Well, we did, nobody answered our calls.
I left a voicemail and I didn't get a call back.
And the number of the letter?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
I didn't get.
It's like to say something.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so I just wanna sort of try and, the reason why I was asked to come is to try and distill things back to the, the variances. Um, and you, you are obviously the authorities on this, uh, but I believe based on my reading of the bylaws for the town, that public safety is a reason why a variance could be modified or, or not approved. I could be wrong, and I'm willing to defer on that, but, um, that sounds to me like in regards to the variances, the, the sort of distal, distillation of the concern.
Yeah. Uh, I, I, I don't know whether that is true or not, maybe our, our fearless leader here can tell us that. I, I'm more sensitive to, um, determinations and changes of land use that don't comport with the law, a- and, and I, I, and it's not an opinion, it's just, you gotta follow the law. I always, when I was in your shoes, was hoping that a board would follow the law, because I never came in unless I knew the law was on my side.
Yeah.
Never. You know, so, so you gotta make sure the law's, if it is, I'm happy to rubber stamp it for you, but I wanna see how this conforms to the law.
I don't, you know. Yeah, I think if, I, I would encourage you, um, we have, for each one of the variances, we have that eight-page, uh, supporting document, which goes through each criteria for each variance and explains each one of the four criteria for each one of the variances. I don't think you want me to read that to you sitting here.
No, no.
Today, um, but if you look at that, we would take the position that we've made the case that each one of those factors under the law, um, for each one of the variants requested is supported, uh, by our, our request is supported. But I, I fully understand.
Of course.
Topography, shape, or soils?
That's one.
But it says structures in the land, but you're gonna pretty much demolish whatever structure is on the property. From what I understand, is gonna be a, a rebuild, this isn't using an existing structure. So sometimes you've got a situation where a, an existing structure creates the hardship because it's the way it's sitting on land. Right, if this was, i- if they could get the relief they want through a special permit, this would be relatively easy to do.
Yeah.
Right, and, and I'd be voting for it, a- and they may not like it, and I wouldn't be able to help them. Right, because a special permit would, would work here, it's a pre-existing non-conforming site.
Right.
But you guys need a variance, right? That's the problem, I can't, I don't.
Which is why we're here before we do any of that, because we know if we came to the variance, then it's not worth going through all those.
Um, personally, I, I don't think you're gonna get it.
Yeah.
To be.
Plus. Plus the fact that you're.
How my fellows do.
Plus the fact that you're using my driveway as an exit.
Well, it's not a driveway. You have to understand that that road is a road.
Yeah.
It's a private.
But they're, they're gonna make it.
We can't come in.
They're, you're.
You've got a fire hydrant there.
It's right in the plan.
Yeah.
They're gonna make a. That will be.
Improvement.
Fifty foot wide right away to a street, just like any other street.
It's laid out from the twenties, it's just you've used only a portion of what was laid out as the street because it never got developed the way it was envisioned by whoever the original persons that did that. So they, it, it's that, it's your driveway, you have a right to access. So you can run your utilities down there, and I assume that's where your utilities.
Yes.
Yeah.
Free to close.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well. Yeah. I would.
Wanna continue?
That's what I'm thinking, makes sense, makes us, if we can, if there's a way we can address what is, uh, acknowledged to be probably the most affected abutter to this, um, proposal, if we can convince them that their, the criteria are satisfied and there aren't concerns, then maybe.
Different avenues, I think, Dan's got some good, maybe you, you don't need the variance if you go for a special permit. Might be a way easier out for you.
I don't know.
We can.
No, yeah, we need the variance. I think they would have tried that.
Yeah. Are you planning on doing the zone change?
Subsequent to this.
Yeah, subsequent to this, not.
Or this. Well, we're gonna go through the process.
Right.
So we still need a variance, you gotta need a variance. We weren't gonna give them any variances.
Variance could be.
On the zone changer.
Yes, yes, but, um, yeah, I mean, be quite frank, the biggest one I have is the hundred foot buffer one.
Right.
For the three of them, right?
Right.
Obviously, the zone change is a game changer for that, no question.
Right.
Have you talked to them, you know, about the zone changer?
We, we've talked to, we've talked to the town, um, and, uh, yeah, we've all acknowledged that the hundred foot.
Yeah.
Is the significant, uh, issue. Um, so there, I guess there's a approach where we could go.
The whole area has that problem, I mean, the dentist offices are within a hundred foot buffer, probably the back of Friendly's is within a hundred.
I mean, we would, if we got the zone change, we would only need the sign per, well.
So sign and.
You don't even need a permit because it's a pre-existing.
You make it a way, if you don't change, you can change the lettering on the signs, as long as you don't change the dimensions on the sign, you keep basically the same sign. And, um, I don't think they have any right to say you can't build in the same locations unless you knock the sign down and put a new one up. You'd need a permit. I think it, because it's pre-existing, you probably can, if you stay within the framework of what was there, they can't, because it becomes unconstitutional, the free speech and advertising your businesses, you know?
I think we were the Joe's Flower Shop or Ann's Flower Shop, you're now gonna be go, go and wear a car shop. I think given what we've heard tonight and the concerns of the board and the concerns of the abutter, we request that continuance and hopefully, alone, do you want for continued, do you want to?
Meeting or? It's up, you know.
The next schedule meeting.
On the second Monday, right? Both month?
Um, I thought it was, yeah.
I think this is second Monday.
Yeah, yeah, great, so it'd be August fourteenth, I believe. Seven, yeah.
We're not on vacation.
Oh, my. August fourteenth is, it might be on our schedule, so.
I'll make a motion that we continue this application at the request of the petitioner to August fourteenth.
I'll second that.
Six thirty or?
Not available for ten, I'll be away. I'm, I'm wondering if we need a full board.
Well, the, the issue will be then, because we only have four in, in, with Dina, you know, and it's all of them four. Because we're short a member right now, we've got a couple resignations and they haven't filled the vacancies. And Jibius to be an alternate, but an LVC.
I can only vote once though.
I would just.
Yeah, no, you go to September and.
Um, I think we could take that risk because of the due diligence and the cost of extension.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we gotta reevaluate.
I mean, I could possibly go on.
Fourteenth would be at six thirty again.
August?
August.
Let's do it August.
Six thirty, we'd be again here.
Okay.
And we, we'd have a Zoom link if you couldn't attend in person.
Yeah.
So you could.
I could have.
Wherever you're gonna be on vacation, you have.
I know, we got the vacation before that, the week before.
Oh, okay. No, but it's like, if you couldn't make it, somebody.
No, I just, I just marked it in.
Call the vote?
Yeah, I love a vote, um, like the motion to continue second. Second, second, all in favor? Aye, aye. So it's continued to six thirty, I'll.
There you go, I don't wanna steal that again.
Thank you.
Now, maybe, uh, off the record, you guys ought to talk to these guys.
We're just gonna recommend it. We had, we had hoped to, we just.
To get a votes to close, uh. I just wanted to.
Close.
Yeah.
The vote to adjourn, we'll have to do our minutes unless somebody wants to do the vote.
Go ahead.
We gotta point out, we'll keep our meetings at eight o'clock, no, we. Why do you know if we wanted to approve our meeting?
We can do it next meeting.
Thank you.